All right, I want to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of Board of Education for Community Unit District 186. And before I have Mrs. Hines call the roll, I would like to welcome Mr. Hernan. Where did he go? Well, he moved on me. He moved on me. Welcome to the district. He is our new principal at the middle school. We're certainly glad to have you here in the district. Welcome. All right, Mrs. Hines, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bain?
Here.
Mr. Beavers?
Here.
Mrs. Brazel?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Here.
Mr. Rugby?
Yes, here. Next, I have a pledge of allegiance, and Mr. Hernan, would you be so kind as to lead us on that?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the approval of the agenda. Dr. Evers, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
No, sir.
I believe there is on item number 11. Aren't we adding a name?
Yeah, it just doesn't change the agenda.
No, but it's an addition to it. We're adding a name on item number 11.
Correct. One addition on item 11.
Grant Popejoy if you want. If the board wants to write down a name. Will be added on number 11. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number five is the approval of the consent agenda, which consists of: District 186 budget amendment hearing minutes dated 6/15/2021; District 186 regular board meeting minutes dated 6/15/21; Tri-County regular board meeting minutes dated 6/10/21; Tri-County bills for July of 21; Tri-County 2021-2022 budget applications and reports. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number six is the approval of District 186 bills for July of 2021. I will open the floor for any questions from the board for Mrs. Bush. Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion to approve the District 186 bills for July.
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Hines?
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Rugby?
Yes. Motion carries. And item number seven is communications and relax, folks. We got a bunch.
Okay, so the first one is from Christopher Gerrels. Dear Mr. Ellemeyer, please accept this letter as a notice of resignation from my teaching position at Murphysboro High School, effective on this date, 6/21/2021. My wife and I plan to complete our teaching careers in Florida. It has been a pleasure and an honor to work with such amazing people over the last three years at MHS. The work environment at the school is truly one of compassion and respect for all. I appreciate the many opportunities afforded me over the years in allowing my classes to go on field trips, debate in the auditorium, and work with other teachers in their classrooms. If I can help in any way with transition of the next teacher, please contact me. All textbooks and supplemental books are stacked in the storage room. Thank you again for a great experience at MHS. The school is doing amazing things for its students and staff. Sincerely, Christopher Gerrels.
Now I'll entertain a motion to approve that resignation. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
This one's from Kelly Phillips. Dear Murphysboro School Board, I am writing this letter to announce my retirement at the end of the calendar year in 2024. My last day of employment will be December 31, 2024. I have spoken with Dr. Evers regarding a mid-year retirement, and will work with everyone to make the transition as smooth as possible. I have truly enjoyed working at Murphysboro School District 186, and would like to thank you all for the great opportunities you have given me, not only as a teacher, but also as a student advocate. This is an exceptional school district. I am glad that I have been a part of it. I have enjoyed working with and learning from my colleagues. I will miss the many valued friendships I have made and all the students I have taught and mentored over the years. Thank you again for the great opportunities you have given me as an employee in Murphysboro Unit 186. Sincerely, Kelly Phillips.
Now I'll entertain a motion to accept that resignation.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Doesn't matter.
Motion carries.
We said the same time.
You've got to speak up.
Yes.
Raise your hand.
No, I said, I said, "Second," then he said, "The same time." I said, "Take him."
All right.
Okay, the next one's from Sherri Schim. Dear Dr. Evers and Murphysboro School Board, I am writing this letter to inform you that I will be resigning my teaching position with CUSD 186 before the beginning of the 2021-2022 school year. I am taking an administrative position with the Regional Office of Education, number 30. I began my teaching in Murphysboro the fall of 1993 and have thoroughly enjoyed my years in the district. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to teach the children in this community. Respectfully, your Sherri Schim.
I'll entertain a motion to accept that resignation. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The next one is from Alyssa Sturgeon. Dr. Evers and the Board of Education, I'm writing this letter to inform you of my resignation of the coaching position for the girls' basketball team at Murphysboro High School. I really enjoyed our season and wish the girls and coaches continuous growth and success for the years to come. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Best regards, Alyssa Sturgeon.
I'll entertain a motion to accept that resignation. So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
This one's from Sarah Jacobs. To Lynn Navara, I hereby announce my resignation from the position of Assistant Volleyball Coach at the Murphysboro High School, effective July the 8th, 2021. Thanks, Sarah Jacobs.
Entertain a motion to accept that resignation. So moved. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
This one is from Carrie Kilquist. Dr. Andrea Evers and Murphysboro CUSD 186 School Board, I will be resigning from my first grade teaching position at General Johnny Logan Attendance Center, effective immediately. I have accepted a position as an Assistant Principal at Lewis School in Carbondale. This is a bittersweet moment for me. I have loved every minute of my tenure in Murphysboro School District. I have grown very close to many students and families and have created a school family that's very difficult to leave behind. However, I am very excited to step into this leadership position and continue to grow and learn as a school leader while continuing to be a strong advocate for the students and teachers I will be working with. I would like to thank Stephanie Finkie, Cody Ellemeyer, and Dr. Evers for their support this last year as I worked to obtain my educational leadership degree. They each served as an amazing mentor, and I feel that all three of them have helped prepare me for this new role. I would also like to thank the amazing educators and staff at General Johnny Logan, especially my first grade team. Everyone in that building goes above and beyond every minute of the day for the kids and their families. It is truly an incredible place to work with the most incredible people. Thank you once again for allowing me to do what I love to do for the last 11 years in my hometown district. I have made memories that will last a lifetime, and I hope that I have touched the lives of students I have taught during my time here. Sincerely, Carrie Kilquist.
I will entertain a motion to accept that resignation.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
The next is from Sharon Frye, CUSD Board of Education. I recently found out about an exciting opportunity to focus on educational technology through Idaho State University. These online courses will allow me to learn skills to better meet the needs of our district and our students as we are now a one-to-one school. As per the MEA contract, all coursework past a master's is to be approved by the Board of Education. I am requesting that up to 24 hours, credit hours, of these courses be added to my salary scale upon completion. Thank you for your support for teachers continuing their education, Sharon Frye.
I'll entertain a motion to approve that coursework. So moved. In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The next one's from James Reams. To whom it may concern, I am writing this letter of resignation for the JV Girls Basketball Coach position. I enjoyed my time helping Coach Durick and the girls. I'm stepping down in order to focus time on my family as my children are getting more involved with multiple activities and sports. Once my children get older and are on their own, I would like to rejoin the coaching ranks at MHS in some capacity. Sincerely, James Reams.
I'll entertain a motion to accept that resignation. So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The next one is from Stacy Teft. Dear Dr. Evers, please accept this letter as my resignation from Murphysboro School District. For the past 15 years, I have been blessed to have had the opportunity to form bonds and learn from amazing teachers that feel more like family than colleagues. Having worked at both the middle school and high school has allowed me to uniquely grow as an educator. While the past year was challenging, it gave me the opportunity to solidify my professional goal of being an instructional technology coach. The resilience of the teachers and staff was unwavering, and their willingness to learn new methods and technology inspiring. The support of the building administrators in providing time for training and much-needed resources to teachers was beyond beneficial. While I had hoped to pursue my aspirations of coaching at Murphysboro, it was apparent that that was not going to be a possibility. So I have accepted the position of Instructional Technology Coach for the Learning Technology Center. I cannot express how much I'm going to miss my students, the amazing Murphysboro teachers, and the climate at Murphysboro High School, but I do feel that this is the direction that I am meant to go in order to further my professional growth. Sincerely, Stacy Teft.
And I'll entertain a motion to accept that resignation. So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The next one is from Beth Blumenstock. Good morning. Please accept this as my resignation from my position as Special Education Teacher at Murphysboro High School, effective at the end of my current 2021 contract. Thank you for the opportunity to work in the Murphysboro School District. I am taking many special memories with me. Sincerely, Beth Blumenstock.
I'll entertain a motion to accept that resignation.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Last one.
Dear Dr. Evers and Murphysboro Board of Education, I started in this district 10 years ago as a part-time student teacher in Constant Berkeley's classroom. I then had the honor of being a student teacher intern in Michelle Ace's classroom. For the eight, for the last eight years, I've had the privilege of teaching in my own fourth grade self-contained classroom. Myriad of emotions that I submit my letter of resignation to you today. God has blessed us with two beautiful children and has now given me the opportunity to stay home with them. I will miss my brother's family and this district greatly, but I will always cherish the memories and friendships that were made in my time here. It has been a joy to teach each and every student that has been in my classroom over the years. It was a privilege to have had Larry Lovell and Matt Todd as key leaders and influences in my teaching career. I am so thankful for Dr. Evers and her leadership in Murphysboro. I'm excited to see what the future holds for this district. Thank you for the opportunity to teach here in Murphysboro. It's been a joy and an honor. Sincerely, Rebecca McPhie.
I'll entertain a motion to accept that resignation.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, item number eight's fishbowl items, and I don't see the fishbowl, so I assume we have none. Item number nine is the Freedom of Information Act request, and I don't see that there were any of those.
No.
Item number 10 is the recognition of the audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public or employee comments. The Board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy 2.230, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is the time for the public to express its opinion and/or concerns, the Board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or action of the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. Are there any public concerns? Are there any employee concerns? I thank you all for coming. We'll move on to old business. Item number one is the District Financial and COVID Update. This is informational from Dr. Evers.
Title 1, 2, and 4 were submitted just about an hour ago. Pre-K for all in our early prevention initiative, the EPI grants were also submitted today. So we had some new periodic reporting or GADA requirements, some ICQ, they call them, requirements that we had to do to get prequalifications. Those were some hoops that took us a few days to kind of overcome, and once, it was just new little procedural safeguards within the grants. So almost all of our grants are up to date. Our major grant that we're going to be tackling within the next two weeks is how to spend SRR3, the CARES $3. That is a significant allocation of funds, and 20%, a little, close to $1.5 million of those funds, has to be used on learning loss. And so how do we spend, you know, that amount of money on learning loss over the next four years, so through 24, 25? So that's how we'll be tackling. Our biggest grant to date, I think, and so you'll, you'll be seeing, you know, over the next several months, you know, a plan for how we'll approach that. So we've put some heads together, and we'll continue to, and work with the departments and the teams in making sure that we attack learning loss and then also the curricular needs that really have occurred based on, you know, what the pandemics and implications have had, you know, long-term and short-term.
Can you remind me what the timeframe is to spend that money?
That grant's through 24.
September of 2024.
So, okay, so.
The SRR2 grant that we wrote in the spring, we have to spend that by June 30th, '23, but SRR3 gets pushed through 24.
24.
We're a little over 30. So those three grants, SRR1, 2, and 3, actually were hitting us five fiscal years, FY '20 through FY '24. So that's going to be fun, tracking those.
Yeah, good luck.
Yeah. I have a couple things.
Sure, yeah.
Just a couple things, the financial statements that went out in the board packet. You know, we talked about last month at our budget hearing what that fund balance might look like, what we thought that might look like, and for me, I was just hoping for a break even. Our receipts over disbursement show that we're about $771,000, but if you pull the SIU pre-K out, which is just flow-through for us, we hit in the black for the year at about $155,000. So you can't get much closer in a $27 million budget than $155,000 in the black break even. So I was pretty pleased. Now, there's a lot of in and out with these grants, so it's really hard to get that true picture on a cash basis because all that money's rolling in and out, but I was pretty pleased with where we ended the fiscal year. Our auditors are, we're actually here today, so today the table was loaded down with boxes and financial documents, so field work seems to be going really well. And the only other thing I have, a couple things on, our property taxes went out, which I'm sure you all know. The bills went out, and due dates, August 9th and August 19th, October 19th, and we're looking at our first distribution maybe mid-September, mid or early September. Also, something I've been tracking all year have been the county facility sales tax revenues, what that was going to look like, because we knew we were going to get hit hard, the pandemic was really going to affect us. I was really kind of pleased because last year we received $1,551,000, and this year $1,446, which was a 6.76 decrease, but I thought it was going to hit us a lot harder. So I was pretty pleased with, with that. And the biggest month that we've had since we've started, the payment we got beginning of July was the largest payment we've received for the month of March of 2021. I don't know why, but it was a huge month for us, maybe 40% more than what we got in March of '19. 20 you can kind of throw out, but dispensary, I don't know, but, but March was a really big month, so let's just, fingers crossed, there's going to be more of those months coming through for us. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you both. Mr. Sanders, you were out whenever I went through the public and employee concerns, and I understand you might want to say something? Yes, no?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We've already passed it, but I'm going to go back to it because you weren't in here at the time.
Okay.
And I understand there was a two-minute delay, so.
Yes, there was.
It caused it, so.
I appreciate that.
Not a problem. You've got, you've got up to five minutes.
Okay, I won't take that much time.
Okay.
Okay, so you passed the.
I need, I need you to state your name, because.
I'm Ryan Sanders.
Okay, thank you.
To my understanding, you have passed that if you've been vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask. If you, if you haven't, you have to wear one in school, right? For our kids?
No, it's later in the agenda.
We haven't voted on yet. Haven't been presented to us, so we're voted on yet. Okay, so I, can I allow to speak on?
Oh, absolutely.
Are we not worried about the mental ability that is going to cause pressure offsetting the physical? You know, because one weighs the other, and, you know, there's a lot of kids out there. We've got all this bullying, we've got all this whole thing that's going on in this world today. You know, we understand that there is a difference, and there is a safety, but to pick out kids which can and can't, I think it either needs to go all in or all out. And to be honest with you, for the well-being of the children, you're just putting them in a division. You're, you're causing division if it, if it goes that way. And all I can say is I hope to God that you guys just pray with the well-being of the children on this, through the mental and the physical, and just allow that with your choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Sanders?
Yes.
Did you have?
I'm not sure what. Did you say about the other schools?
No, I have not.
Just something else to kind of consider, I don't know what all, you guys know, but I know some of the other schools are definitely not going this direction in the area. There, there's three other schools in the area that I know of that are highly recommending kids that are not vaccinated to wear masks. They're not asking for proof, they're not questioning kids, anything like that. So I know that's the direction that the other schools are going in. Yeah, and then I had a question. If you guys do this, it's my understanding that the school nurses are the only ones who are supposed to have, be able to see our kids' medical records. Is that true?
Part, part of the public and employee concerns is the Board may or may not comment.
Okay, all right.
So.
So, okay, that's fine. So if, I guess if that was the case, is the school nurse keeping track of all kids who are vaccinated and who are not? Is someone else having my kids' medical records? I mean, that's an issue for me, too. These are all just concerns that I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Marks?
I have nothing to say.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I've been told there was a two-minute delay out there, so I didn't want to.
Thank you.
I wanted to make sure everybody had the opportunity if they wanted to say something. Oh, I'm sorry. I, you did come in, and I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I thought that it started at 6:30. That's my bad. I just believe somebody online. Don't do that.
Okay, I need, I need you to probably come forward, and you're going to have to state your name. Because.
Yeah, I'm Jennifer Kennedy. I received a letter from the school, and I was actually really pleased to see that that was the route that you were going in. I feel like we are going to serve all of our student body in the way that we can, the best way that we can. That masking unvaccinated students is really the only responsible decision because, because there's a lot of kids that wouldn't be able to come to school at all otherwise. And with the Delta variant and the unknowns behind that, and the fact that more kids are getting sick, and the numbers in Jackson County are rising, I was actually really happy to see that that's what you're planning on doing. You said you didn't pass it yet, but I'm hoping that you do, because I think it's the right way to go. I actually work in a neighborhood district that is not going that route, and it has me concerned, and I think with the numbers, the way they're going, we're going to see that change. There was very clear wording in their letter that made it clear that that could change at any minute, and I feel like if the numbers are going up, that that's probably what's going to happen. So anyway, that's what I wanted to say.
Anybody else? I want to make sure I got everybody, gave everybody the opportunity. Okay, so thank all of you.
Thank you.
For being here and stating your opinion. We certainly hear everyone. Okay, moving, moving into new business. Item number one is the approval of the dairy bid for 2021-2022, which is enclosure number one in your packet. There was just one bid from Prairie Farms. I will entertain a motion to accept that bid. In a second?
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Rugby?
Yes, motion carries. Item number two, I'm going to love this one. Item number two is the bread bid for 2021-2022. We had one bid received from Bimbo Bakeries.
Former Wonder.
According to Mrs. Marsh, Mrs. Marshall, they did not meet the specs, so that was just informational. We are not accepting that bid, and it was included in the next item, which is the approval of, item number three, the approval of the food bid, which is enclosure number two. There were two bidders, I'm sorry. We are splitting it between two vendors, U.S. Foods and Cole Wholesale, and I will entertain a motion to approve that unless there are questions from the Board. And I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll leave.
In a second? Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Rugby?
Yes, motion carries. Item number four is the approval of the waste collection and disposal bid for 2021-2022, which enclosure number three in your packet. Again, there was just one bid received from Republic Services. I will entertain a motion to approve that unless there are questions from the Board. In a second? Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.[1532.02]
Yes, motion carries, item number five is the approval of the motor oil bid for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. It was in, it says enclosure number three, it's an enclosure. It was in, it was in your packet. You've got three items, it's number three here.
They're all on the one.
On the one, I got you, it's still, it's on enclosure number three. Uh the one bid was from Heinz Oil, if there are no questions from the board, I will entertain a motion to approve that bid. Second?
Second.
Mrs. Heinz?
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rugby?
Yes, motion carries. Item number six is the approval of the diesel fuel bid for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, which also is enclosure number three in your in your packet, we got bids from Southern FS and Heinz Oil. And it's the recommendation to approve the low bid of Heinz Oil. And I'll entertain questions from the board or a motion to approve the bid. In a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Heinz?
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Rugby?
Yes, motion carries, item number seven is the approval of the copy paper bid for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-four, which is enclosure number four. And
It's actually not twenty-six hundred ninety-five dollars per ream, it's two dollar, two point six nine five dollars per ream of paper, because that was gonna be some expensive paper. And it's going to be eighty-four hundred reams at that price, twenty-two thousand six thirty-eight, that was my my fault, my error. Um eighty-four hundred reams is a full truckload of paper.
And the recommendation is to award the bid to Contract Paper Group at the figures that Mrs. Bush just mentioned. If there are no questions from the board, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Heinz?
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Rugby?
Yes, motion carries, item number eight is the approval to destroy verbatim recordings of closed session law states that school boards are required to make and keep a verbatim audio or video recording of every closed meeting. A recording may be destroyed after eighteen months by vote of the school board, provided that proper minutes of the meeting have been approved. If the board so chooses to destroy the recordings, it is the recommendation to destroy verbatim recordings for the closed session meeting dated July of twenty eighteen through June of twenty nineteen. I will entertain a motion to approve that. So move. In a second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed, motion carries, item number nine is the permission to go to bid for bus transportation for school year, which would begin twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. As you remember, we approved an extension in February of this year, now we're gonna go out for bid if so we'll approve via the board, I'll open the floor to questions if you have any.
One question, uh we say the word bid and bid typically means to me low price dictates. Would we be looking at more or less soliciting for proposals and some intangibles being included in the scoring of those proposals?
Yes.
Yes.
We're allowed to do more of that than we have, then they changed the laws a little bit, so there are other things that we are looking at other than just bottom line.
Okay, obviously, uh age of fleet, training of drivers, maintenance facilities, I mean, there's a lot of things that are going into building a bid package or a proposal package.
Well, we spec that, how old, you know, how old can the buses be, you know, no more than three years kind of kind of thing, I mean, that's not that not necessarily what we will do, but we have those specs so we can compare apples to apples at the time. But we also ask for references and financials and um and you know, as part of that process.
Okay.
I act I actually, just so the board is aware, and I think I may have mentioned this before, one committee formed on this, this is a large contract. So I'm gonna I'm gonna form a con a committee just to make sure we've got everything covered. And and Mr. Benning, I think some of your questions there that can at that point be addressed, so.
Okay.
First, let's let's go ahead and if there are there any other questions? Then I'll entertain a motion to go to bid for the bus transportation.
So move.
Second?
So either.
Mrs. Heinz?
I'm gonna roll it. Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Rugby?
Yes, motion carries, um I I would like the following people to be on that committee. Uh Dr. Evers, Mrs. Bush, Mr. Ellemeyer, Mr. Hernan, Mr. Bain, Mr. Green. If you will all so be so kind as to do that, uh and Mrs. Bush, will you chair that, please?
I sure will.
Okay, item number ten is the press policy update, this is informational, we got those via email. We have, they will be on review until September, if you have any questions, please contact Dr. Evers.
If there's anyone who would like it all scanned.
Hard copy.
Go ahead and start it.
I will, I'll I'll tap and highlight in three different colors. It would be like a bedtime story, yes.
Okay, item number eleven is the approval of the tuition free student, students for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. We will have two, Brant Popejoy in fourth grade, Olivia Popejoy in sixth grade. The parent is Jesse Popejoy, which I am assuming will be part of our closed session discussion. So uh I will entertain a motion to approve that tuition waiver for those two students. In a second? All in favor? Opposed, motion carries, item number twelve is the approval of the Marcusboro High School Pavilion.
This one's my fault, I it's it's totally paid for by um the foundation, Smizer Grant and MABA, so. It's it's going to be erected on the football field, but I hadn't put it on a previous. In the end zone, in the end zone, it's a it's a party hut, no, I'm just kidding, I'm sorry, it's um.
It's where you sit, right?
Yeah, it's where I sit, it's my pavilion. I've seen the sign, that is my, yeah, it's gonna be my castle, so um no, it's. You wanna talk about the location? There's no truth to that.
There's an area that was excavated when we did the concrete, we planned this ahead of time because we knew that MABA had money that was kind of earmarked for a pavilion from over a decade ago. Um and we just had to find the rest of the funding to get it. Uh there was a part that we planned in the in the phase two of the construction out there. Uh last summer, it excavated and leveled off a spot for it. Um it is north of our home bleachers, okay? Back behind the softball bleachers and behind the right field uh foul line of the baseball, firsty baseball field.
Between the two fields?
So it's between softball and baseball and football and soccer and track, and and so it, I mean.
So it's outside the fence.
It's outside the fence, it's out in its own area and and um I believe we went with a forty by forty or a forty by thirty.
Forty by forty.
I think it's a forty by forty. It will match this.
Forty by nine.
Uh yes, it will match the same pavilion that's going to be on the south side of the high school. So it can be classroom space as well and it all matches and looks looks good and it's gonna match the new uh sighting that the construction classes are putting up on the bleachers as well over the next few years.
Who's constructing this?
Um Trueville.
Trueville.
Trueville will do that.
With concrete?
Uh with concrete in the pavilion, we will have to do an ADA short sidewalk and and uh
To connect it.
Mr. Ripley is aware of that and is good with taking care of that and getting that done to connect it, because it because of the excavation, it's up a little bit higher, so we will have to do an ADA sidewalk up to it. Think it'll be good, I mean, when you sit, you're out there, the sidewalks help with elderly and ADA uh with with getting out to the fields. And I think this is gonna provide people some shade uh in the middle of a hot baseball game and things of that nature that we really need out there, there's no trees or shade out there.
Drums and apple time.
And drums and apple time and the heat for that and 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 I mean, teams having team meetings. And if classroom teachers want to take their class out there for class outside, which helps with COVID as well and and fresh air, it's it's should be a positive addition.
And they've, the foundation has already already agreed to provide tables to
Yeah.
for that project, not not necessarily all that will be needed, but they the first six tables.
And MABA and and the foundation are both kind of, the foundation is putting forward a little bit more money than MABA, but both are contributing greatly to this.
And the Smizer Foundation donated to the foundation for this project, so it's a a three-organization commitment to a space that can be utilized by everyone in the community.
Which we which we also look to probably putting a sign up on it that says Marcusboro, like boosters, uh Smizer and the Educational Foundation their funds to help direct this, so.
That's the best part.
So forty-six
It's paid for.
Forty-six thousand dollars, but none of it district.
That's why I say that's the best part, it's paid for. Any other questions from the board? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve that. Second? Mrs. Heinz?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Rugby?
Yes, motion carries, item number thirteen is the approval of the safe return plan for S R three. This is in essence what we did a year ago with the reopening um of the schools.
It's just a much briefer document. It's just a briefer document, a return to school plan.
As far as what, the good thing is, last year, I think we said it was written in sand, this year, I think the foundation is getting a little bit firmer as we move forward with this whole COVID thing. This has been sent out to the board as far as what the recommendation is going to be from the superintendent and her committee as far as the reopening. So the recommendation is to approve that and as we did a year ago, uh allow the superintendent and her committee to make changes as throughout the year without the board having to convene and every and approve every change that was made, this is what we did a year ago as well, so. I'll open the floor to any questions.
How does this change um extracurriculars, does this?
I I H S A has already said for indoor sports that in order for you to be unmasked that you have to, so that was about a month.
You have to.
You have to be vaccinated, you have to give proof of vaccination to to the school district, so.
I just carry some of the schools who are going mask optional.
Yeah, they're supposed to put the mask on.
They come here, but they.
They're they're supposed to follow I H S A.
They're having to follow I H S A. They just say I'm scoring.
That's that's that was a question I asked, you know, yesterday, what are you going to let them opt during the day and then when they go to basketball practice if they're not vaccinated? And they said they're working on a vaccine campaign in our neighboring district that has decided to do mask optional, but they are also a nine through twelve district. I will tell you that most of the Jackson County neighbors who are K to eight districts are 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 erring on the side of caution and and sticking with the CDC guidelines, so I mean, it's the, I know that Carbondale is the one that most people read in the newspaper was making it optional, but um recommended. And they also said, you know, if Jackson County Health Department says that there's a spike in positivity or if there's a move, even if you read Mr. Booth's letter, that that they'll follow the recommendations as they progress.
Jackson County Health Department come out today saying they think vaccinated or unvaccinated, you should wear a mask indoors.
Yeah, the four, the fifteenth, they sent out correspondence that said um that they would encourage because of the spit the spike in cases. And so when we looked at as of yesterday, um there were a hundred and twelve cases last week, active cases of COVID in Jackson County, an additional fourteen on Saturday, eighteen on Sunday, and seven on Monday. So there they were not seeing those numbers of active cases or um hospitalizations, so they um encouraged us to stick to the CDC expectations. And so that plan has, and I haven't seen anything today, that was of yesterday. But um the plan was developed based on the CDC guidance from last Friday, so. And not not really, that was not something that I've been comfortable straying away from because of of the just the liability, the toward immunity liability that we have from the district. You have not just one layer of mitigation, when you look at the page, you're talking about masking of all unvaccinated um buses per CDC and that's all transportation, whether it's public or school transportation, all transportation, whether vaccinated or not, because they're not putting capacities on on buses or cafeterias like last year, last year was limited to fifty in a space, so this year you can have as many as will allow for with three-foot social distancing, so each cafeteria is looking at following that new three-foot threshold instead of the six-foot threshold. Social distancing signage signage and stickers, I know Ms. Bush ordered some more and um a lot of the school, well, at least one of the schools has them installed and partially installed um with the social distancing stickers at the new distance, you can see them still on where they were on the floor in our hallway because they haven't buffed them. Bottle filling stations will be used throughout the pandemic and that is a nice um little treat that the foundation has done for the district. They're they're purchasing another twenty-five hundred bottles and it seems like that was the exact number that we needed to get to the end of end of May, I think Ms. Vicky called and got the last little group, and so we were able to use it for children who lost a bottle or their bottle bottle got dirty, they could replace them. So we had about six hundred, seven hundred extra bottles and so they stretched out for the whole course of the year, the foundation's already agreed to to buy them, those were, silkworms are gonna hopefully have them all in for us close to the start of school.
I kept the purchase order today.
Um manipulatives, there is a little bit more flexibility on shared manipulatives, so if you have a kid going up to the permitting board, you know, just with the emphasis on sanitizing between students and not just necessarily everyone, every child having to have everything and little bitty, you know, cubbies and spaces. Um hand sanitation dispensers are installed in classrooms and available throughout each building. There's also, they they've had that throughout the pandemic, the desk sanitation supplies, a high school, I know when they cha change classes, they always sprayed the desks. That each classroom teacher has a different routine for when they, you know, move to specials and things where they might spray and wipe their desks, so. Well, the backpack sprayers, that the custodian said that that was universally the most efficient process to making sure that all surfaces got covered, we're not gonna do it on the lockers, they they found that that drips through those crevices and into the and since we're going back to locker usage, not spraying on the locker, so the the kids, um we have, I wanna say two full pallets full of individual bottles of sanitizer, so every child could have at least one, probably two of the small desk size, locker size. And one of the things that Darren had said, that when they get into the lockers, they can put one of those bottles in each high school student's locker to start the school year, so you know, there's plenty of those supplies that are carrying over from last year and um new fresh supplies. The district will continue to be a binax now, rapid test site, I didn't give you those weekly numbers, we still, I would say tests. Ms. Sunny, how many do you test a week typically at the high school? Not many?
Not many.
Okay, I think Ms. Heinz, maybe we've done five of this summer or so.
I've only done two this summer.
And I've done maybe two, so maybe four, between the two.
I've done two this summer.
Okay, so about six, so um not many, but it's still available and people know.
Just a quick question, only because I received an email from somebody from Yale doing a study, is this rapid test saliva or nasal?
This is nasal.
Okay.
We looked at a saliva, there's a free option.
You show that letter, I think.
Yes, and there was a free option provided by University of Illinois, they came up with a PCR test, but they required a minimum, uh Mr. Ellemeyer and I participated in that um webinar and it's free of charge, but you had to have, it was for high schools and you had to have have at least fifty percent um participation weekly and it was saliva and spit-based and you couldn't do it at the start of the day because you had to assure that they didn't have anything to eat or drink for an hour before. And so to get fifty percent threshold when we haven't had, because we followed the CDC guidelines last year and we didn't have spread within the schools, um to get people to say, yeah, I want my kid to be tested twice a week using a spit test at the earliest you could do is nine-thirty in the morning, because you had to make sure that they didn't have any food or drink, was not what we were really wanting since we've had, we've had good luck, I think that I've been very satisfied with what we've found with our our rapid test results. And so it's it's a continued service that will arrive to our, you know, students and the community if they need, you know, rapid testing will will be there for them, you know, if a child feels symptomatic or ill or if just, there's, you know, some individuals, some teachers like to have it, you know, just for screening on a weekly basis or a mul multiple times per week basis, we'll have that. They're free of charge and they will be um given to us at whenever we request them, so we can request them in the quantity that we need. So we have, I think, two thousand on on hand, so.
Is the Jackson County Health Department willing to support our binax testing?
That is a tricky question, they have, they've had a lot of turnover, so that was one question that I asked for. Every Monday, the Jackson County superintendents meet via um a web, you know, Google Meet and they last year, there there were some source tracers who would and some that wouldn't. Their turnover's been pretty significant and they also don't know how long they'll be funded for source tracing, so we may be at a point where um the the buildings will have to start, you know, essentially making those decisions at all. And you and the principal supported with those calls, any way to call the parents, so it wasn't the first time they heard, but it's a week. So it's a week quarantine now and a test to go back, and that was the question, will you accept a a rapid test to come back to school, because last year they they required a PCR and now it's S I H is is the only location that you can go to to get.
So they're not going to accept it?
They have not, they that is a, they're going to tell me.
So they'll accept it to put a child on quarantine, but won't accept it to take one off?
It it seemed a little unusual last year, but they have not given me clear guidance on whether or not they will from coming back from quarantine. We will, it it was accepted all throughout last year, if it was a positive, a positive is positive and um a kid would go into quarantine, it was just, there was one source tracer in particular who did not like the rapid test, the rapid antigen test and preferred the the PCR, so required it of one of our teams to to get back on, so. Yeah.
Cause number, the the issue we have with all of it is does masking, we we have a gap, we know we have a gap in, you know, the the flow of education from one grade level to the next with the disruption that we've had and we're not gonna be able to gain that back as easily as we lost it. Does masking hurt, help, or make no difference in the classroom itself? Not having a teacher wearing a mask will help a ton, I'm sure. It'd be easier to understand, easier to follow, you'll see, you know, the visuals, the, you know, energy expression, things like that. But does this, like making it mask all the time versus mask when transition? Um if we're able to, you know, social distance within the classroom.
The new recommendation is three-foot and mask if unvaccinated, and since we have over half of our school population is under the age of twelve, where it's even a a choice option for families, you know, that's where I've I've aired on the side of caution, because we didn't see, because we followed what was the standard last year was six-foot and mask and that will still be, now it will be when they source trace, it will be, you know, where you're three feet apart and where you're masked and if we we can't say yes to the those two questions, then it becomes a matter of the whole class potentially in isolation unless it's a, you know, a secondary class setting where they have a certain number of individuals who are are already vaccinated and asymptomatic, they could stay.
Do we have the ability to do six feet?
Do we have the ability to do six feet, that's why we were A B scheduled at the middle in high school because of class.
We will struggle at times for it to be possible, with six hundred kids in the high school to be three feet.
Yeah, there's some classes with sixty or more kids, like the choir, you know, it's a large space and they can go some hours to the auditorium.
And that's the other part of it, the guide says when possible, there's gonna be times that it's not possible.
And so by nature of, when he pulls back the camera, if it's a class that has sixty-plus kids, he's already gonna potentially not have that three-foot threshold, so then you look at individuals, you know, potentially clustering based on and and really, when the when with regards to the masking versus non-masking, it it's a it's a disclosure that the parents will have to provide. If they want to provide their child's vaccination status on it on COVID, if they want to be mask-free or a teacher wants to be mask-free, they're just gonna have to provide it discreetly to their the principal at registration so that we can have that database that's, you know, safeguarded, so.
So then with students, I mean, you'd assume a teacher's gonna honor the system and do the right thing. Ten, twelve, fifteen, eighteen-year-old student, I mean, obviously, we know what that's gonna be like, so who's gonna, how is that gonna be held accountable?
We have, I mean, I think, Mr. Carrington, how many more masks did you purchase this week?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
I'm not saying like, wear, have a mask, but then, like, do, you know what I'm saying? Do you actually, does, if the teacher within the classroom need to know who isn't isn't vaccinated so they can hold, cause if my buddy's vaccinated and he's not wearing his mask, he's gonna take my mask off as a twelve-year-old.
Right, and so, as Right, and so as a twelve-year-old, and the, I mean, that's, the teachers will have to, you know, keep track of.
Cause we look at the way sports goes, everybody's wearing a mask, nobody's wearing a mask. Every mask is around the chin in every sport that's played.
And I will tell you, that's not what we saw, whether it was Ms. Finkie's kindergarteners or Mr. Ellenmeyer's twelfth graders. When they wore the mask, they wore the mask.
Well, right, right. Don't get me wrong. When it's everybody, it's easier.
Right.
Yeah, when it's everybody, it's easier when you start having five percent not have to wear their mask. That five turns into fifteen, turns into thirty.
Well, and that's what you want. I mean, you want people to, as it progresses, just like when we, when they kept track, the teachers could keep track of people who changed, you know, who were temporarily remote or, you know, for those two weeks of quarantine. If a child adds the vaccine, there'll be an icon for just that teacher to be able to determine. So if a kid, if you came in and said, I got my second vaccine, my mom turned in the card today, that teacher would be able to pull up and see that, the vaccine icon.
Right, I wouldn't say the five, ten, fifteen, the thirty of vaccination of people not wearing masks in the classroom. There's still maybe five percent vaccinated, but after the first week, within a classroom, there'll be thirty not wearing their masks.
I don't think it's not, I mean, this won't be an option. The kids will all be, if you, unless you are vaccinated, a teacher or a student, if you're not vaccinated, you can't elect not to. It's only vaccinated employees and students. And that's what, you know, the goal is to keep the schools open and safe, and that's the healthiest return. And that's what they called it, you know, the CDC plan that, you know, that's the goal is for healthy returns to school. And so, you know, I didn't, I didn't cherry pick the guidance on what I liked or didn't like. That was the guidance that was provided by the CDC last week.
So what considerations have been made to basically all or nothing? Either everyone wear a mask? I mean, obviously it would be safer if everyone wore a mask.
I, but then you have the question on the employee level. If you're looking at a kindergarten teacher who hasn't been able, the teacher hasn't been able to see their mouths for the last school year to do, and they're vaccinated, standing up at the front of the classroom and doing, you know, phonemic approach with the forty-four sounds, you can't even see the shapes of their mouths with the forty-four sounds, so. Like I said, I didn't.
All of her children are going to be masked because they aren't eligible for the vaccine.
Right.
So you're saying that if the kids that they're, even though she's, I'm gonna say she, is vaccinated, she should still wear her mask even though the kids are wearing theirs?
I think every child, if we're gonna, I don't think we should cherry pick which children should wear a mask or shouldn't wear a mask.
I think we get into deviating from the recommendation from the local health authorities when we go that way as well. Or if we go none. And I think, I think, and again, we had a conference call with our attorneys this morning, and their recommendation is you follow the recommendations of your local health departments.
And if, for defensibility, yeah, for defensibility.
Yeah, because we have the ability, if we deviate, to lose our tort immunity.
You have the ability to make local control decisions, but that does not indemnify you from the liability that if you have six-year-olds who are all unvaccinated and that child becomes sick. And I did share with you that correspondence from the family that is in a very similar situation of an elementary to school child who, you know, if we did mask optional, her child would be in a situation where it would not be safe for that child to return to school.
And Mrs. Evaldi, I quite frankly, almost agree with you that we should do it all, but when we ask, you say, well, that's a deviation of what we're being told by the local health officials, so.
And the, and the.
And it's not a recommendation to do that.
Yeah, I mean, it's just sticking to the plans.
Right.
And layering your mitigation. It's, you know, that's what I said. You know, the one that they're, everyone focuses on the masking because it's the least comfortable. But there's, you know, what, probably twelve other bullet points underneath it that keep our schools safe and in session. And quite honestly, I'm not, I'm not an MD, you know, I'm an EDD. And so I don't know what of the twelve layers of protection kept our kids safe and in school, but I was sure we glad that we had those four days a week with our K to six, or K to five kids in our, you know, the two days and that we stayed in remote except for at the recommendation of the, the one week that we paused, our in-person status was at the recommendation of Jackson County Health Department. It wasn't because of a peak in positivity. It was concerns for the local metrics. And so, you know, that's where we deviated from, like kind of just staying the course on what was working. But it is just, the plan is developed based on what is the current last Friday CDC guidelines, so.
This thing, it's gonna be obviously, the vaccination topic is a hot one to begin with, regardless of this one. And I would hate for someone to feel pushed to get the vaccine if they were ever have a reaction to it. And feel like that, you know, a child versus a parent, you know, I'm getting bullied or I'm having anxiety because of the mask. And again, there's no right, there's no right answer to any of it. I just wanna make sure that we've discussed all of it.
Right.
Well, I think that's why this plan is so fluid and.
Right.
It, we, I mean, we kept our fingers crossed all last year. I'll just be real honest, I said a prayer every morning for our entire staff and our students, and we made it. And so now we're moving into another year, a little bit less restrictive, but we're still there. But we're headed, the way I look at it, we're headed in the right direction. And it's, there's no right answer. There's nothing, there's nothing about this I like at all.
Flow, and I mean, it could become a point where it is, it becomes an everyone needs to because our metrics get so out of control. We just don't know what, what the future holds. I, I don't, I mean.
Last year, the actual children getting it within the schools' buildings was.
Negligible.
Right.
So, yeah.
And that's where like the science points to, they don't contract it within the school buildings. Now granted, everybody's wearing masks.
Everybody's wearing, universally wearing it, right, too.
We're following the rules. Right.
Yep.
I just wish we could help negate the learning gap that we're gonna have because of them wearing the mask another year.
And I will say, it didn't matter what time of day I went to like Ms. Finkie or Mr. Todd's. They were using outside creative spaces every single time. The middle school, we had teachers who were outside. I mean, they found places, and there were four or five teachers who would find creative places to do reading and activities. You can still do the unmasked outside, and it's just at that three foot, that three foot standard. It's the inside where you don't have the fresh air, the circulation, that, that, that practice. So not that you can do it year-round, but we've added some structures, you know, they'll be added at the middle school and at the high school to give additional structures so people can go outside. But I know they use the heck out of the concrete at Ms. Finkie's building. I mean, there were, there were teachers out there with kids all the time to give them that break so that you could have some normalcy, because it is, masking is restrictive for just that kind of, you know, the free flow of.
Can I say one thing?
I would say at the high school, our data would show that being in the high school masked all year last year and only being there two days a week, the vast majority of students that came and were in person, even two days a week, were successful. Our learning loss occurred with students that were all remote. Major learning loss due to all remote.
Exactly.
K-12, yeah. The math didn't have an effect, but absence did.
Correct.
Well, I think our teachers did a phenomenal job, cause in essence, you're looking at two or three different lesson plans that you got a plan put together and, and I, I don't know how they did it. Take my hat off to them and applaud them for doing it and getting it done. Was there a gap? Yeah, there was a gap, but I think, and I think all of them will tell you, the kids need to be in the classroom.
And we had very minimal behavior issues with masks. I mean, it was just a few students that maybe were repeaters. Now with this division, I don't know. We'll see. Like you were saying, does that cause other kids to not wear them because other kids don't have to because they're vaccinated? And that might be something we have to discuss as an administrative team as well, is, okay, we're having a lot of problems because no one's masking because their vaccinated friends aren't. Even us as adults. And we might have to adjust. We get into rooms with other people and somebody, you know, four people aren't wearing their masks, the masks start coming down. I think we think it's going to be a fluid situation and we just have to see how things are progressing. Who will know the, like, question earlier, who will know?
Just the classroom teacher, like for their class section, so they'll be able to look and see.
For the children who, children who are vaccinated?
Yeah.
Obviously, it's gonna be very apparent who's not, who's vaccinated.
Right, but if you said you were and you weren't, they could, if you're a student in a teacher's class, they can pull up on that and be able to determine whether or not your parent had disclosed and given that card. And that's a choice to disclose and give the card. I mean, there might be, you know, families.
Can't they pull up school nurse's antihot record now if you're under eighteen? They can't?
The school nurse, nurses could.
Yes, I said.
The nurse.
Not the, not the, not the vaccination record, so. But they could if you have, if you had a peanut allergy or things like that, they could. So it's similar to adding like, to that nature, like the nature of you, you had like a peanut allergy. It's a very discreet icon that would be only like understandable by the person.
I know we go by CDC, but giving more local control is like throughout the years, they're a combination. Like if this region drops significantly in our local health department, changes their guidelines. Are we just strictly going off the CDC or we go?
Well, it's the combination of CDC, Jackson County Health Department, and IDPH. And so when you look at those three components, because of course you wanna look at what's happening in the local community, but you also need to look at the global picture of how, I mean, we're obviously close to other states that are having really, really, you know, like significant peaks in Delta variant. And when we look at those decisions on whether we can like pull back and maybe at some point go optional, it will all be based on guidance of those three components, the CDC, the IDPH, and then Jackson County Health Department be like, yeah, we haven't seen, you know, if we get to a point where we're seeing in the teens or, I mean, again, but I mean, when you're looking at a hundred and fifty-one active cases, that's the highest that we've seen in the last three months.
Well, on the flip side, I know I've got a lot of calls and comments about what Carbondale's doing. But if we follow.
But that's the high school only district.
But I mean, if we followed Carbondale last year, we would have been in school almost fourth quarter. So we did our guidelines last year and had a full school year. And cause if we're gonna pick Carbondale this year, we could have picked them last year and just not been in person. And I talked to you about it. I'm not a hundred percent sure I'm not a mask person. I'm not convinced they were. I wear it when they're told to, but as a steward of the finances and liability of the district, if we stay consistent, we followed CDC guidelines from day one last year, and I don't feel bad following CDC guidelines now as long as, like you said, it's fluid. If stuff changes, then, and like I said, the health department in the news article today suggested everybody have one. So that's our local health.
And CDC has also given guidance on when school districts start to release and let go of mitigation layers. They need to do it one at a time and let it take its place slowly.
It's easier to pull back than add.
Right.
And like I said, our local health department is saying everybody go. So I mean, that's what, I know we're going by all three, so I don't know what the answer to that is.
And I, I would be okay with all students and then vaccinated teachers potentially being considered just so that they could teach those direct skills, like if they're vaccinated, having the teachers as a compromise to start the year. Just because I do know that, I mean, because then you wouldn't potentially, yeah, have.
And I mean, that's what's hard about this whole decision is the CDC giving one guidance on local health department today to come out with another.
I would, I, we, last year, we didn't cherry pick, we, and we talked about that as the group last week. We didn't cherry pick which one felt like the warm sweater. We followed the CDC plan and we didn't change each week based on the metrics exclusively to start or stop schools. When you are looking at our counterparts, almost all in Jackson County, with the exception of Alvarado and DeSoto, most of the others spent over half of their year in a remote model, and it was not successful for children in, in learning loss. We were able to stay four days in person for our K to fives and AB for our six through twelve throughout the year with the one exception of when it was right before Thanksgiving, we had, we were requested to do a one-week pause. That was the only time, and so I do think, I, this is the guidance that I'm really, really comfortable based on what the scientists told us last week. So this is what I'm proposing with the understanding that if there were significant changes that we would ebb and flow with the data and the information in front of us.
So really, we've gotta make the, make the decision tonight to comply with the requirement, to approve. This board has to approve. We have the recommendation from the superintendent to basically follow the experts' recommendations. And then we know this will be a fluid thing that as we march through the year, it may change and give her and the administrative team discretion on making those adjustments.
Correct, that way we don't have to come back every time a change is made to approve that as.
So with that being said, I really think we probably just need to move ahead.
So this is, this is the plan that the admin team worked together on based on the CDC's current guidance, so.
Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the return to school with the understanding that the superintendent and her committee makes changes as recommendations change.
I'll make the motion.
In a second, I'll second. Mrs. Hines.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
No.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
No.
Mr. Ruggie?
Yes, motion carries. We have a need to go into closed session.
I make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Section two of the Open Meetings Act five, Illinois law statutes one twenty slash two C to review discussion of minutes lawfully closed, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district, including hearing testimony on complaint lodged against an employee to determine its validity, collective negotiation matters between the public property and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning sandwich schedules for one or more classes of employees.
Right. Mr. Times?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Brazel?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel, sorry. Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggie?
Yes, motion carries.